Excellent, thank you, Seth. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, the Select Board, Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, at 6:31. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask that all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of the community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, feel welcome and respected. We ask that our committee members, all of you participate, commit in these standards to support and respect our community. I wanna start with the second of the agenda. Do we have a motion to update the agenda? Moved by Ms. Campfield, second by Ms. Conley, all in favor?
Um.
Um, all of us is for, now, sorry, so be unanimous.
What?
Do we have any walk-ins in the room or on Zoom? And that is an agenda item that, an item that is not on the posted agenda. I don't see any, so we will move to the report of the town administrator.
Good evening, another lovely day here.
Yes.
We wanna start, as I did yesterday, on kind of a down note. Last week, Rosewood Golf Course was hit by vandalism. Young teens were taking bikes, D bikes, onto the course after hours. They rode their bikes on the green, they did some other damage to the greens, we posted those pictures on Citrus Community Television. So, this is a top facility, it costs a lot of money to keep and maintain. If we find out who's doing it, we will prosecute them, so please remember, the golf course is only over the golf at this time. It's not open to walkers, bikers, dog walkers, so please stay off the golf course. Parents, please let your kids know that if we catch them out there and they're doing damage to the course, we will refer to Citrus Police and we will prosecute them.
Is there an estimate on the damage?
They did some damage to one of the greens, they've aerated the greens since, so Ian thinks that it should be alright. But they took a golf club in one of the greens and knocked some shots out of it. So, um, not good greens, about $50,000 to build a green. So, we'll keep an eye on it, we do have some more cameras out there, we'll be keeping an eye on things, and if we catch you, we will prosecute you. Want a treatment plan? If you go by, you can see the masons are working down the south end, they're making some good progress. This week, we do expect to see the start of structural steel going up in that area. The board wants to go over, we do go over every Friday, we have a meeting in the trailer, but take a walk around the site and let us know. Just please let me know in advance, because maybe you're best in the hat to go out of the site, otherwise, you can make it a fun, we'll be happy to take you over there. But it is going well, still on budget, still working, fine on, uh, on time, schedule's open in 2027. Town election is Saturday, May 31st, from 8 a.m. to 6 p.m. in the Citrus High School gym. Ballot has been approved, preprinted and is back, town clerk has them. There is a narrow window to mail the ballot, get it back to the town, town clerk's office. Well, the clothes, clothes on May, polls close on May 6th, it's May, it's a new day. May 31st, but 6, so if possible, if you want to mail ballot, we would ask you to drop it off at Town Hall, put it in the drop box, so we make sure it does get counted. If you will be traveling, sick, or otherwise unable to vote on election day, you can't vote after tea in person at the town clerk's office up until new time on Friday, May 30th. Candidates on the ballot, the ballot questions are both by mail forms and additional election information can be found on the town clerk's page. Just go to the website, the red banner at the top, that will take you to all the information you need. We do wanna remind people, aside from the usual oasis for town boards and committees, you'll also see two ballot questions on this year's ballot. What is about the disposal of radioactive, radioactive material at the old plant? This is a non-binding question. The second question is a debt exclusion for the township of New Votec High School. Citrus voted overwhelmingly to authorize construction of the new high school in January. This question allows the town to fund the project outside the normal tax levy, which is what we do on other large construction projects. Again, May 31st is the town election. The Jenkins School will be having their first spring walk and roll to school event on Wednesday, May 31st, to celebrate the school's new bike racks that were funded through a grant from the Commonwealth. Traffic will be stopped on First Parish Road from Stockbridge to Kent Front Street, to allow the students to walk and bike from St. Mary's to the Jenkins School between the hours of, between 8:20 a.m. and 8:30 a.m. Should be a great event, last year, they had so many people, they couldn't keep them all on the sidewalk, so for about 10 minutes on the 21st, we will be running into a little traffic on First Parish, so please plan accordingly. Candidates forum hosted by the Citrus Chamber of Commerce and the Citrus Historic Society will be held Thursday, May 22nd, 7:00 p.m. in the Citrus Performing Arts Center, event will stop promptly at 7:00 and run through 8:30 p.m. The Oceanside Drive seawall replacement project has begun. A contractor, ACK Marines, performing the seawall replacement, 22 Oceanside Drive, 12 Oceanside Drive. The work being done currently near the ocean, near the entrance to the beach at Oceanside, I'm sorry, it's not any parking lot. That's gonna be a lay down area for the contractor, access to the beach will not be impeded, but you'll see them working there to access the beach. This is a replacement project, similar to the projects we've done before. It is different from the work we're doing in Cedar Point, which is just a repair at this point. Tennis and pickleball court restoration project, the Recreation Department, has begun. All five courts will be repaired and resurfaced. Two courts closest to the Recreation Department building will be converted for standalone pickleball courts, semi-permanent weatherproof net systems. Three courts closest to the Citrus Historical Society will be repaired and painted for tennis only. Courts will be off limits until completed, the estimated time from the start of the project to completion is one to two weeks. Working the Jericho Boat Ramp is moving along. This is a state project being done by the Massachussetts Department of Fish and Games, Office of Fish and and Border Access. Replacing the catch bases, doing pavement work, making repairs to the pavement, installing new lighting, and making some repairs to the ramp. The base coat paving is scheduled for tomorrow. That's done, we'll meet you with the contract, and hopefully, when we get the paving down, we'll be able to talk overwhelmingly about the boat ramp open, so stay tuned. Most of the work that will be done after, after paving is done, contractor, they seek to keep the boat ramp open. So, we'll see in the morning, hopefully, people will be able to start putting their votes in. Way down, going to the boat ramp, the Coast Company's doing the replacement project of Jericho Road, they're now down pushing Citrus Yacht Club. Bushes of the road are closed, so please just caution on traveling in that area, that has a replacement paddling all the way to Eternal Lighthouse Road. Friends of Citrus Library invited to participate in their fourth annual library art auction from May 7th to the 17th. The artwork is available for viewing at the Citrus Library's art gallery and on the auction website, thirtytwoauctions.com/sitrus2025. Fortunate to have 27 local artists who generously donated their work, which includes watercolors, oils, acrylics, and mixed media paintings. All proceeds from the silent auction will fund the free, family-friendly outdoor summer concert series we held in Citrus Library each Wednesday evening in July. So, enjoy the beautiful artwork and support the local library. Finally, for tonight, the annual outdoor water ban is in effect in Citrus. Citrus Water Department is opposed to the annual water conservation measures, which allows outdoor watering before 9:00 a.m. and after 5:00 p.m. between May 1st and September 30th. Also, between May 1st and September 30th, automatic irrigation systems. They be used one day per week as designated by voting precinct. For information on precincts as well as outdoor water use restrictions, quickly ask questions. Visit Citrus webpage and the Water Resource Commission page for any questions you might have. This is an annual restriction imposed by the Commonwealth based on the water controls. Usage in the Oxford Basin is not tied to the quantity of water available on our reservoir. Then, starting next week, going to Labor Day, I'll start giving the reservoir updates and how much water we have as we go to the high summer usage. That's what I have for today, happy to answer any questions.
Alright, do we have any questions? Kevin, well, do you have questions?
Not a question, just wanna, uh, right, so in addition to the candidate's forum, it's served at 7:00. At 6:15, if presidents want to come early to the Performing Arts Center and the lobby, there will be tables set up with right now 11 different organizations, I expect that number to grow. Um, just providing information about what they do and if you're interested in getting involved and it's everybody from the flute pantry to the all-night bread party to the library there, so come at 6:15 and find out about other stuff within the town and then come to, you know, listen to the agenda.
Oh, that's great.
Sounds like an opportunity to share your time and money with some excellent organizations.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify for people, I think people who have wells know this, but if you see someone and they're watering off the schedule, it may be, and it's not up to you as a citizen to go and question them, but they probably have a well because this, the ban does not extend to people with wells, even though we would hope that they would be equally cognizant of the fact that it doesn't help the water situation, even if you've got a well, so anyways, just wanted to know.
Yeah, if you have a dissonant, then don't police yourself, let the water department know, they'll send someone out to see what's going on.
Yes, and there are people that water and just pay the fine, so.
Right, which may not always be a well.
You know, how they just pay the fines.
You can't get a, I don't wanna call it a waiver, but if you had to put in a new septic system and there's a requirement that the grass take hold on the top of the system, the water department will give you permission to water until that grass exists, so there are other ways around it, but you need to have permission on your own well. If you have any questions, contact the water department.
Well, it applies to the landscaping as well, right? Say, if you're a brand new house and they're putting in new bushes around the.
You need to still get a waiver for that.
Oh, alright, well, that's good for people to know.
It's generally, normally on that, we would tell you not to plant the bushes until the fall, unless there was something that happened now, so that you didn't have runoff or something.
I was just gonna say that, if you don't, if you only have dirt, that's a problem in itself. Clarity.
Questions, alright, I think we can go to the next item on our agenda. Discussion update on the Memorial Day observance, Joshua Summers, our veterans' agent is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, as everybody knows, Memorial Day is rapidly approaching, 13 days away, Monday to 26th. Uh, we have our Memorial Day parade scheduled, as usual. I am 99% complete logistically with everybody that's in the parade, our, all of our speakers, uh, all of our setup, everything with public grounds, uh, with the schools, students who will be performing as well, we're all set there. Um, I actually have, I made just a couple copies for you all of the programs, just in case you wanted to look at it with who our speakers are, and I'll be happy to talk about that as well.
Yeah, why don't you tell us who our speakers are?
Thank you. So, uh, our M.C. will be Mr. Ned Kelly, who was the M.C. last year. And then our keynote speaker is Mrs. Kathy Payne. Uh, Kathy is a 24-year retired commander from the United States Coast Guard. She served in place, uh, during 9/11 at the Pentagon, was a aide to the Vice President, served on several ships. Um, obviously a Citrus resident, her husband is one of our schoolteachers here in high school, very involved in the community. Uh, she's also been to a few of the Veterans Coffee Hours, uh, and performed some of her music, she's a music therapist as well. So, we've had a couple sessions with some of our veterans and it went over smoothly, it was great. Um, yeah, it's always great to have, you know, 15 veterans singing, you know, the Beatles songs, banging on drums, all in unison. Uh, so I thought she would be a great candidate to speak, and she very happily accepted. Um, so we're excited to have Kathy speak, um, as our keynote speaker. Also, for the invocation will be Father Matthew Conley from St. Mary's. I made, it's, it, oh, one of them, I made the edit, not all of them, and then, uh, the benediction will be the American Legion chaplain. We'll, we'll, he's speaking for our benediction at the end. Uh, we have our solists lined up from the high school, as well as our trumpeter, and every, and a couple songs by the Gates Band and the Nausel High School Band. So, uh, American Legion, that morning does the flotilla. Uh, Representative Kearney is going to join the legion for the flotilla. Uh, he can't be here later on in the morning, so he wanted to be present, so that's kind of the only thing on his schedule that he could get to, to be present. Happy that he'll be here that morning to go on the flotilla.
Right.
Yes.
That's always fun.
And then, uh, as of pretty much next week, flying will start around Citrus, you'll see that, uh, the wreaths, the red, white, blue wreaths, as well as the flags. American Legion is also going to do Homerock on that side, so they're not forgotten about. Um, and then also downtown Public Grounds, you know, we'll do down by the harbor and some of those stuff. I've delivered everything to them already, so they're gonna start next week. And then we'll have some of the scouts, we're gonna do some of our private cemeteries, so we provided the flags for that, but they'll, they'll flag them with some of the girl scouts and boy scouts. So, that'll all start next week as well.
That's fine. Were there questions from the board?
You know, just thank for naming, checking up the units.
Oh, yeah, good, I have a checklist I'd like to go over many times, so.
Yeah, great.
Who's not?
Yes, um, I would say up until about four years ago, I think COVID really put the, the watch on a lot of stuff. Um, we used to have active participation by the Little League, the, all the little sports teams in town and all that stuff, has that?
Marching in the parade, or like helping flag, or?
Even just coming to observe the ceremony.
Right, so, uh, that, that was brought to our attention as well, and, um, Sarah and I in the office, we were gonna start reaching out to maybe some of those organizations. I hadn't, uh, that's only, um, and maybe that was just oversight, but we, we are gonna start reaching out to someone and see if they either wanna be in the parade or take some part in the commentary, or just some, some, something.
Yeah, it's because it's a, it's a nice ceremony, it's very hometown, it's very moving when you go and, and, you know, to the extent we have as many, especially kids, as possible, and I know people are busy and games and all that stuff.
No, I, I do agree with you, I think they would come out, uh, when we did Reese Across America back in December on the 14th, uh, when we did the public cemetery, we had amazing turnout. I think we had like 60 volunteers, I mean, we did Reese in that cemetery and that's like, we, that's how many people we had, so I, I know the interest is out there and I do think they would, um, they would join us if invited, so I'll, I'll make that a priority for the rest of this week, to start reaching out to some people and just see what they're telling us.
Yeah, I think that it's, I mean, the, the, it's the Little League that has like the billions of.
Right.
Yeah, and then all the parents come too, because you can, with the ban, all the parents are there.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, and I'm not picking on Little League, but you've got the numbers and this is.
Well, it's going anywhere right now, right, it's active, so, and, um.
Thank you for that.
I'm sorry to say, the scouts are pretty small in numbers, I mean, compared to Little League. Like you said, it's the time of year when they're really active, so, um, it would just be nice.
Sure, yeah, we'll reach out, we'll get a hold of them.
But thank you for doing this, it's, it's.
Absolutely.
If, if, if anyone at home has never been, something to see.
Yeah, we're excited, um, we'll be there, I mean, just keep your fingers crossed, I even.
I know, that's a lot.
You know what I mean, so, we have, we have a backup plan, but we don't even wanna worry about that, discuss that, so. Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Jared, can we make sure that it's on the town calendar too with the?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I've been posting some of the invites around some of the buildings, um, just whatever for visibility. And I've sent, I've emailed them, the school has, um, I'm in the, you know, emailing you guys.
Yep.
And our TA, of course, but, um, yeah, I still post it, you know, where Mount St. Thomas, where they best around Citrus.
Awesome, thank you, yes.
Well done.
Thank you for acting, we just, this is just information, right, yeah, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
We will see you there.
Absolutely.
Um, alright, so next, I guess I should announce that the public hearing, which is scheduled for 7 o'clock, um, to discuss the National Broad Call Petition 30772218 at 289 Gant Road, um, has an, has a continuance to.
It's a public hearing, it's a wait-in phone.
To announce that, okay, are you here for that?
No.
Okay, perfect, I will announce that in 10 minutes, um, I thought you were all here for that, so, um.
We definitely.
We will hold until, although everybody already knows, um, we will move to our 7:05 agenda item, which is not a public hearing. We are going to discuss and vote on the designation of.
Are you reading something?
Town and administrator, town collector, and board of health director, with authority to act on behalf of the town of Citrus regarding the Creamwater Trust for CWSRF community septic program.
I have to read this.
So you are not Pam.
I am Pam's kid, she's physically working in her office.
I need to read this.
Oh, you do, um.
You can let me say, and then it'll be part of the.
Oh, you present and you can read, so, again, wait a minute, sorry, I'll be quick.
But he's eager to do it.
Oh, yeah.
Prime and ready, at the November 18th, 2024 special town meeting, voters approve another $200,000 for the Gericocke Sewal Program, which is reimbursed to the town for veterans. The Board of Health is, got people waiting for the program, so this would authorize, um, Pam, the town administrator, now the board group, um, from the Board of Health, to finish the paperwork with the clean water craft, so we can do the drawdown of the $200,000.
Yes. Awesome.
We'd like money.
Yes.
Especially money that can save them.
Yes, so now, our, yes, now, Jamie, it's your turn to read.
Authority to file, whereas the town of Citrus, after thorough investigation, has determined that the work activity consisting of CWSRF 19172 community septic management program is both in the public interest and necessary to protect the public health, and that to undertake this activity is necessary to apply for assistance, and whereas the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, pursuant to Chapter 21 and Chapter 29 C, the general laws of the Commonwealth, Chapter 21 and Chapter 29 C, are authorized to provide financial assistance to the municipalities for the purpose of funding, planning, and construction activities relevant to water pollution of vacant projects and drinking water bottles, and whereas the applicant has examined the provisions of the Act, Chapter 21 and Chapter 29 C, and believes it to be in the public interest to file a loan application, that will therefore be resolved by the town of Citrus as follows. One, that the town administrator James Boudreaux, treasurer, collector Pamela Habatable, and board of health Andrew Shield are hereby authorized on behalf of the applicant to file applications and execute agreements for grant and/or loan assistance, as well as furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to the applicant for a grant, grants and/or loans, as may be required, and authorized to act as the authorized representative of the applicant in connection with this application. Two, that the purpose of said loan, loans, if awarded, shall be to fund planning activities. Three, that if said award is made, the applicant agrees to pay those costs, which constitutes the required applicant's share of the project cost.
Hey.
Would I connect the motion, would you?
Sure, do we have a motion?
Motion to authorize the town administrator, treasurer, collector, and the board of health director as authorized officials for filing paperwork with the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust relevant to the CWSRF 19172 community septic management plan, as approved in special town meeting, Article Number 7, Item A, held on November 18th, 2024.
Hey, motion by Ms. Gilmore, we will have a second, Ms. Campfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, now we have a aye. Alright, so, there you go, so the next one is the dog park, because we can't do, we can't announce, although I'm asking, actually, that there is a continuance until 7 o'clock, so we're gonna go to the front Citrus Dog Park, so we're gonna fix that.
Our mind.
I love it.
I don't.
I apologize for my turminess, we're walking away, microwave pizza incidents, I'm, and can't make that up, but.
I didn't even wet last night, so.
Fire department, that show. Smokey, apologize.
Hi, I'm Sue Dowar, I'm vice president of President of Citrus Dog Park. My name is Liz Weesa, who is our president, um, and kind of fundraiser. We are here after a very long struggle to raise money to build the small dog park as an addition to, um, what was put there in 2017. So, um, we are here to present the town with the check, uh, for the money that we raised in the amount of
160, uh, sorry, 164,000 dollars, 94425 cents. And that with the CTC funds of 18,055 dollars and 75 cents makes us whole for the lowest bidder contract of 183,000.
And Sean's also, I guess, gonna talk about the details of entering into the contract.
He's.
Yes. So, I just wanna reiterate how excited we are to finally, um, get to a point where we're under contract. We were waylaid a little bit with COVID, um, as most things were, and it was really, um, difficult to get the fundraising sort of back up and going after that. We've had a lot of very generous donors, and we've also, well, everybody's a generous donor. Um, but we've literally collected 50 cents at a time from people at the transfer station by staying out there all day. We've had events at the dog park, we have our Halloween costume contest, and we've done, um, done other things to, uh, to raise money and recently just participated in the Get Free Bush, um, event, and so, here we are, and we can't wait to get going.
It's fantastic, I love it, ooh, the Venmo, we hear that, we hear that, I love that, you know, a few times, you're walking around, alright.
Yes.
Um, which is fabulous, love the, the, so this is, oh, do you have a nice picture of it?
Yeah.
It's a half acre.
Yeah.
In the back.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if you, you're coming in the main entrance to the dog park, the small dog park would be on the right.
Questions?
Um, what constitutes small dog?
30 pounds or less.
30 pounds or less, okay, so everyone weigh your dog before, because that's what I mean, it's a small dog.
Yeah, just like anything, you can't.
Well, 'cause, you know, I mean, some people think their dog is a small dog.
Yeah.
Uh, I haven't, but I think it's a small dog, but compared to my other big dogs, he's a small dog, but he's 45 pounds, so he's not a small dog. So, I think everyone has to understand, and I'm sure it's gonna be missed on the.
We'll, we'll be working on line and, uh, same way we did on the original part with the ground rules.
And I guess, bigger question I have is, is any of that money from the, that come, the, the, the pill and profit of organization that started the dog parks and was making all these big grants?
Stanton Foundation.
Stanton Foundation, any of that money?
No.
Then that's extraordinary, they do raise that much money, so I really, hats off to you, congratulations. That's a lot of money raised from basically a lot of small corporations.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, it's, it shows support to the dog parks, so that's great, yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, people love it, people love it, yeah, and a lot of friendships are formed there.
Yeah, it's a very social place for, for people, I think, um, more so since COVID, that was one of the few places that they could sort of get out and about and, and socialize, um, and, and bring.
Distance.
A lot of the new dogs that they adopted during COVID.
Right, yeah, right, working, great, and that's how we would find someone, oh, I, I own a tree company. I can get, um, some, you know, I could give you some free, um, wood chips, you know, mulch, yeah, we don't call it mulch, because that's like.
Don't you have a lot of wood chips around your store?
That he won't, there's no donating, no, 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 there's no, 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 don't.
Never.
That's always, you're not always talking about the non-donating.
Yes.
There's piles, piles of mountains and mountains.
I know, it's a league, we, 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 no.
I know.
Those mountains are probably a little smaller.
Wheelbarrows.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's, that's funny. Alright, so one question, because I think it's amazing, um, that you've raised this money. Do you anticipate the parking will be adequate for this endeavor? I mean, I don't know, uh, regarding utilization, I don't know if like, the same number of people go, they'll just go in two different spots? Or like, if it would attract additional people?
We'll, we'll have to watch it, um, you know, we weren't sure that that would even be enough parking for the, you know, for the original setup. And, and it has been, and I think people, um, sort of learn, figure out schedules and times that work, or, you know, driving by, you can tell whether it's, you know, really, really busy or not. Um, so, you know, I think we'll, we'll have to look at it, but, you know, so far, so good. Um, and I think it's just a question of timing and schedules.
Think you can also park other places, more.
You could, you could, you could park around the corner, all of that.
You lock your car.
You could, although it's also busy there too.
Yeah, and it's a quick turnaround, most people, you know, are there for maybe 15, 20 minutes on average. Maybe some, you know, half hour, 45 minutes, but, you know, people are always coming in and out.
Well, I think this is commendable, on behalf of the small dogs of the town of Citrus.
Sorry, half a minute.
I mean, they are so.
I remember I brought my two Frenchies when they originally, they're gonna be 10 now, but when I brought them, originally, I brought them to the big dog park, because that's all, that, where they were.
Yeah.
The little girl, she was right next to my feet, scared to death.
Oh.
I'm talking to some people, the socializing, and all of a sudden, I look over, and the, the little brother, who's running with the German shepherds.
Yeah.
Acting like a German shepherd. Acting like a German Shepherd. I'm having a heart attack, but it was quite a experience.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we're not, we're not excluding small dogs from the big dog park. 'Cause there are some that believe, you know, they're a hundred and twenty pounds and run with the big dogs.
I just think it's commendable. How long do you think this is gonna take? What's your try to do mentally to get things done?
Probably.
Yeah, I think that's best, yes, yeah.
Just a couple.
We'll talk a little more. I think it's supposed to be done by September.
For fall, yeah, for fall. That would be great. So well done. And I'd like forward to hearing your next events.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, we still have to work on maintenance and poop.
Oh, yeah.
Fall cleanup, so, thank you.
Very well done.
Thank you.
The only thing, the only thing I have to say, which people should realize too, into how many times I've talked to the park through Sichu. I can tell them all about the businesses, it's like, we can't check out this place. I mean, it is, it's an engine. It really does move people in.
Yeah.
I'm amazed how many of us are like, this is a nation.
Well, you were advertising.
Yeah, they know.
They're, yeah.
Advertising, opportunities. You're here first.
Okay.
Just one question about the Stanton Foundation. We did receive a grant from the Stanton Foundation that we used to pay for the design. There is no Stanton Foundation construction money, but I don't wanna leave them out, but we received.
That's good. Two grants, one for the last dog park. And then the smaller one that Sean used to pay for the five design area, they might have also.
Well, without them, we'd have no dog park at all. And that's, or we'd be building the first one now after we had ten years of.
It was, it was significant. It was significant.
Yeah.
Money, so. Well, I have a motion on behalf of my grand puppy COVID dog that stops for stop in Sichu is at the park. Before it goes to sleep. So in honor of Rocky, I would move that select board award the contract to provide. I mean, I got rid of it.
Page fifteen.
I know, but I just. It's all exciting for Rocky. Not answering, good call. But page.
Fifteen.
All right, so Miles can't do it.
Move that the select board accept the donation of one hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents from the Friends of the Sichu Dog Park in order to construct the Small Dog Park. Funding sources CPC eighteen thousand fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Friends of the Sichu Dog Park, one hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, totaling grand one hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. Well done.
As you were saying, I can't feel all those in favor.
Ah, unanimous. All right, so we can still pick your Rocky with it.
Now we have announced the note. The note color.
Wait, you have to do the.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Do the award. You have, well, you can wait for that. You have to do the contract award.
Second motion.
The second motion that can't be started.
Okay.
The order has seven in law. Yeah, you can go past seven, you just can't start this.
Sure.
Sure, okay.
Okay, I would move that board.
She has checked, I think.
Award the contract to provide construction services for the Small Sichu Dog Park to downed Dan's Company at Princeton, Mass. with a sum of one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars with Rocky's debt.
Second. Conley, all in favor? Aye. Now, yes.
That'll, that'll.
That'll be cool.
Thank you very much.
Great. All right, now officially.
For the third time, you get to announce.
We are announcing.
We are opening and continuing.
Yes. So we're continuing, glad that I have to say why. Lot for the discussion with National Grid. They requested to postpone the hearings, but additional measurements can be taken to confirm the poll location. So with that being said, we're gonna be looking for continuance to July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
And that's two eighty-nine Gannett Road.
The two, uh, low of the poll, petition number three oh seven seven two two one eight, located at two eighty-nine Gannett Road. Hopefully, twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, seven, so that will be the motion.
Move to continue the public hearing for poll number three zero seven seven two two one eight located at two eighty-nine Gannett Road until July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at seven P M.
But it's Harrison, second and five, I guess. I can't feel it. All in favor? Uh, it is continued.
Yes.
Continue.
Continued, I guess, that's proper.
See you in July. See you in March.
Kevin, how are you?
Excellent. I have two concerning contracts tonight.
With the water meters.
We're in rapture.
We're making great progress.
We're making great progress. The guys can go racing on it.
Well, I love it.
Um, so the first one is just for the meters and arcs for the meters. And this is, um, the meters when the houses can change them out and, uh, plus the radio control wants in. We figure now we're at about eighty percent of the need for replacement, so, um, you know, Zach Garrick and his proves, they've been doing a fantastic job switching them around. And anytime anybody's, I have free time, they can want meters and they work on it. So, uh, we're pleased about that. We went out to bid and we sent it out to eleven vendors. We had, we see two bid packages. Um, it's kind of proprietary because it has to worry about radio meters, so, um, high sales, which has been the company, been providing to us for a long time, but I'll, I'll, I'll hope better.
Now, I remember we spoke about this years ago. It was gonna take much, much, much longer. Uh, and then we got thirty meters and you guys, right, just been doing a great job. And people need to know that. How, how fast and they have to go through this and it's gonna make a huge difference. To the building and everything else, but yes.
Just one question, Kevin. Had there been any glitches in terms of a meter that was replaced all of a sudden? You know, we had a couple of situations where people, bills went skyrocketing. I think there were some people kind of blaming the, the meters, but there's been no evidence of that, right?
No, there hasn't been any evidence of that. There, there has been one issue in on rock that they changed the meter route and, uh, the plumber who was doing it didn't shut something off and it's frost products has a wild act. Other than that, it's been very minor. It's worked out pretty well. Um, so there have been those spikes. If there were spikes, typically we'd be able to face him down to a toilet or something else that's been bothering us.
I'm good.
I'm good.
No, I got, I thank everyone who's going out there and, and by some of it's.
No, they appreciate hearing. Some of them are in crawl spaces and everything else.
They're very responsive. I had a dripping one on. Like it was dripping. They came out. It wasn't holding on. But that, I was.
We, that, that's great.
Yeah.
Take our motion and then we'll watch. Page eighteen.
Move that. Yeah, you go. Being so nice. I move that the select board award the contract by water meters with absolute encoders and integrated radio to high sales incorporated of Sudbury, Massachusetts for the unit prices provided. It's postponed.
Starting, Mr. Gilmore. Well, isn't fair. Why are you unanimous?
Excellent.
Um, Selco.
The next project is, we solicited bids for replacing the waterline in the Old Forge neighborhood. And we had to really sponsor bidders. Basically, you know, we're, we're happy with the bids. They were extremely close. Selco was two million seventy-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. The next bidder was CC Constructional, was, um, two million eighty-three thousand six hundred and six dollars. So it's only three thousand dollars or something. We're really close to it. Um, we've had good luck with both of those contractors. They each have work in town. Um, so we're confident that Selco can do the work and we'll go with the contract and get them started.
Is that just, I just want to mention, is that a typo on the copper services? Selco, they're thirty dollars, everything else is eighteen thousand.
No.
Any reason for that, or is that just?
Um, they penny the AC, the copper services. So they put a penny, they added the unit into something else in their bid, which is, you know, um, we had an option for plastic or copper. And from what he told me, because I asked him about it, is because of the options, he was afraid he was gonna confuse his bid and make a mistake in the bid. So he kept them both the same, pegged them, and then added the prices in for the interest contract. So another unit's a little higher. Could be a lump sum or whatever else.
Yeah, yeah, there's. But you're good? We're good.
Um, one question. So as then, this construction will start, it'll be done over the season. And what about the repaying?
Like anything, we will let the payment settle in the following year, we'll probably repay. Um, if we're very aggressive and get it done earlier in the season, we could do it at the end of the season. But in all honesty, it probably next to crap.
Most crap.
Yep.
That communication with the neighborhood? How's the communication?
Well, I'm very lucky because one of my engineers lives on that street. So he has been out there and as a matter of fact, Selco called me today and asked if we were being awarded, if he was being awarded the job. I said, yes. He said, great, because I've got a load of pipe that's being delivered for another job. And they canceled the job, so I need a place to put it. I've already bought the pipe. And I put it on the street, so I said, talk to Jeff and, you know, get ready to get going. So I think they're gonna be very aggressive. People might see.
The neighbors are gonna be very excited. They've been honest. We paved that neighborhood. Streets are in tough condition now. So it's partly, project will be running two waterlines. I think we have a raw waterline from the well up to the treatment plant and then the new distribution system. So we'll be waiting for that now. We'll get a new waterline, better water quality, eventually a little bit of road.
Yeah, so I, I didn't explain that, which I should have, and I apologize. Is, um, we have two wells that are connected, one at the end of Old Forge. And what we're gonna do is run a raw water pipe up to the treatment plant. So if we ever had any issues with PFAS or for whatever reason, we could run that water through the treatment plant and treat it there as, as well as mixing the water and, and through our water quality. So it's kind of a, um. So what? It's a, it's a two far and it's, it's good insurance if there's ever a problem with those wells. And we can repurpose that water and have treated that and stuff, so.
Well, half the year, half the way. We got letters from the kids on the road a few years ago.
Yeah, we took it, Sarah.
Uh, yeah.
That doesn't mean we want a hundred letters from my big kid on every road.
Well, last question before we get to it. Well, just in general, how are you seeing, uh, for me, this is great that we actually have a lot of different bids. How are you seeing just prices in general for, for things lately? Are you seeing more, um, more of a jump? Are you seeing?
Um, we have mostly buy American clauses in, in a lot of our water work. So we don't allow Indian or Chinese products, uh, which are other versions of, of some of the metals. So we haven't had any major effects in that way. The only thing, we have issues with, with the buy American clauses. It might be made by an American company, but the rubber gaskets in between the pipes are typically made, um, at a rubber plant in Honduras or wherever the particular rubber plant is. But we haven't noticed any huge fluctuations in the style that I saw.
All right, yeah.
So nothing out of the ordinary. But all, everything's made in the U.S., the brass, you know, copper, everything else, so.
Okay. All right, take a, um, motion.
Move that the select board award the contract to phase six A of the water main rehabilitation project to Selco for Construction Corporation of Pembroke, Mass. for two million seventy-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents.
Conley, second by?
Aye.
You got it. Ms. Campfield. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's a huge one. I know. What do you do?
Did you have any questions on, uh, Small Dog Park?
I thought it was gonna, they were gonna be separated, so I didn't want to step on their toes with the donations, so.
My question was the picture, 'cause it was, yeah, it's great.
And I apologize.
No, we should put this online too. This'll be, this'll be what people wanna know.
Right.
Is what it's.
It would actually be done for the fall.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let's see, great. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Gilmore.
Andrew? Early. Andrew?
Yes. Uh, yeah, have they had robbing or something?
No, I, I robbed him. I wasn't sure. You can have one.
Oh.
Um, you are early, I believe.
Thank you.
Um, Sarah's is planning to speak to you about the special event, so we can pull up on that.
I thought he was attending too. They do have a water.
They do, we will speak to you on our, I did love them, they were running probably.
Yeah.
I think you should have some time to say.
Good, you can do that.
Okay.
So I don't know if you wanna move up face or you wanna move up Nancy's.
Uh.
Yeah, I'm an audience. Is there anything that people in that?
We can keep moving. Let's go. Yeah, let's go up to, uh, no, that's an easy one. Yeah, let's do the ride share.
Yeah.
Come on, do something, someone's planning.
All right, come on up.
Perfect.
Perfect. We're gonna do ride share in a row. Have to catch a breath. How are you?
Good.
All right. Jordan, you're right in the fire, but here we go. So let's talk about the opening of the harbor.
Well done.
Sounds good. So we're looking at a children event from six to nine on the sixth, in conjunction with First Friday down the harbor. Uh, we'll have all the hard master vessels be open, police vessels be down there. Coast Guard vessel, NOAA vessel, Marshfield Hard Masses, Environmental Police, Sichu Fire, and fishing vessel. We're also gonna do harbor tours. They'll run off the docks. We can have a good music guy on the lookout from eight to nine for a hour. Uh, and then that's on the water side. And then on the grass side, we'll have a bunch of different tables set up, basically, just information stuff, stuff from NOAA, stuff from NOAA, NOAA itself from Russia. Some local oyster information. Like I said, Miller, uh, police fire harbor mess, we'll all have tables up there as well if I hand out to other kids. The new radio station, one oh one three, is gonna be broadcasting down the harbor as well that night. Uh, he's also a member of the waterways committee, T.J. Melvestine. Another table as well for glitter tattoos and fairy hair for the kids.
For kids.
Fairy hair, fairy, yeah.
Fairy hair.
And glitter tattoos.
All that glitter.
Went in.
Parked in Rome. Parked alongside them. We're looking to do a couple food trucks if we could. That'd be pretty much it.
That's it's all first Friday. Now, is there a cost to go on this, uh, this ride, this, this tour, the boat, or?
The harbor tour, there will be, I believe it's five or six bucks per day, I'm not sure about kids. That's a separate, that's a runboat, on the watch companies down the harbor.
That would be dope. Harbor, a tour? I love it.
Pretty good.
I love it. It's fabulous here. Talk about it.
I think it's fabulous. I wish I could be there that night. Unfortunately, I have another commitment. I think this should be something considered and do annually.
Yeah.
You know, you're a regular, all the work you're gonna do before it, you might as well focus at that place.
Yeah.
Quite, quite a bit of effort, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. And hopefully, if this, like I said, this works out, maybe this will be set every year or come on May. I'll do some other things down there.
Yeah, I do, um, appreciate the waterways commission and that they have a marketing, a couple folks working on marketing and helping with the harbor master's office to promote this. And they just kind of looked at their idea to make a larger celebration open. And I think it's a great idea and looking forward to it. Yeah.
I just have one question. Um, people are used to there being a blessing of the fleet at some point. Is that part of this or is that a? I just have one question, um, people are used to there being a blessing in the plea at some point, is that part of this or is that separate?
No, that'll be separate, I wanna say that, uh, August first.
Okay.
On August sixth.
Is that a, a question that, oh, anyone wanna ask so much? So, um, I know how much work has gone in this, and it's so exciting.
Fair enough.
Um, so congratulations on that. I will have to ask a select board question. Is, so the swing trucks, awesome, there are local businesses. There, this location is outside of their permits, you got all of it in the minute? What is that?
Approving it as part of the, the special.
Then the special.
Hmm.
Good, um, that's exciting, I don't think it'll cause any problems, it's a great event. Um, thank you so much, please, it's exciting.
Thank you, excellent.
Alright.
Good.
Alright, we're gonna start promoting it, get people ready to get there, um, take a motion. Oh, I should add, I'm sorry. I just think there's any questions, comments? I should get that more, I'm sorry. Alright, seen them, now we'll take it.
Move to approve the special event opening of the harbor on Friday, June sixth, twenty twenty-five, from six PM to nine PM. Pending all departmental feedback and approvals.
Okay.
John Moore, say goodbye, Harrison, all in favor? Alright, alright. Thank you much.
Good deal.
I'll put you guys there.
Right.
Make a laptop. So I think of a laptop.
Alright, we are skipping over the shellfish license. And we're gonna go to, uh, adapted reuse. Uh, of old gates. You'd like to.
So this is the development agreement, uh, which the board talked about two minutes ago.
When getting the money.
It's a draft, the board has plenty of time to review it if you want. Uh, one of the things we did put in was the two additional public meetings outside of the permitting process. Other than that, it's fairly standard, same type of language we use on essential property.
And essentially, th- this is not, this, again, this is us for. Enter any, I try to explain, observe, this is just for us to start the process, this will just be a grant for us to, what we talked about the last meeting, what we talked about it. What kind of meeting? Again, this is not necessarily set in stone, this is, this is just us going forward with the process to say, we wanna have this, we're gonna go. By.
What I have requirements out, we will be, we'll symbolize the support on their application when it comes in. Family forty B as opposed to a.
Hostel.
A hostel forty B, thousands of posters, yeah, so, again, it'll follow the exact same process that we worked on besides the park. So, uh, many, uh, many miles over before we sleep, but this is the official kickoff, now we're gonna actually start the process.
Excellent. Very talented boilerplate.
Questions?
I did have a couple of questions, um. So I know there's been a lot of discussion on traffic, and I know that maybe that's outside of this agreement. But at what point does a community get assurances that part of moving forward is addressing traffic? In that area?
I'm sorry, the name, where I left, but, uh, when you go back to the planning board meetings. Can't be my computer, my classroom. If you go back to the meetings on senior center, basically the planning board said, anything else you're gonna do here? You're gonna have to do a traffic study, so we'll have to do a traffic study on that intersection. Um, that's outside this, that's something we're gonna have to do.
Right, and that would go through the planning board. I just want people, because I don't want to, people to think we're glossing over concerns, and these, like, the traffic is a really big concern in that area. Um, and it needs to be addressed, and we need to help, to, as a board, we need to help facilitate that getting addressed.
So Angela's.
Yeah, the, uh, PPW had plans years ago. That I think were, were roundly pan, included a roundabout there. Um, so sad. I don't think people wanted it on that road, but, uh, we'll stop, use that as a starting, we'll have to do the traffic council, traffic area, so. Uh, we'll probably do that out of, sort of, my tech will finally get started on that, and then they'll have to go again again. I don't think too bad.
Um. And then, um, Angela, hold on one second, I have this. The clause on the DBA. Very. Is it number eight? Um. Eight, number eight, well, huh, it's, oh yeah, there's a bunch of different numbers. Yeah, but clause on the DBA, the ZBA clause, the submission of comprehensive permit. If, I guess that I was, I guess speak to the ninetieth day following such notice, I guess. If there's, if we're unable to, um, come to terms with what the ZBA thinks, there's like ninety days after that to reconcile. And that's ninety days after the ZBA makes, publishes their notice or ninety days after their hearing?
It'll be ninety days after the developer provides us the notice of what the issue is on.
Okay.
Okay, so the ZBA will issue a decision, the grantor group will say, these particular provisions of the ZBA. Permit are inconsistent with what's in the development agreement. We sit down, we say, well, we can do this, we can't, no, and at the end, if we can't come to an agreement, then they're out and we're done.
Okay, so it's, because ZBA has ninety days to actually write their agreement, so I wanted to make sure that we weren't, like, getting into a situation where we didn't have a written. We, we had notification that there was an issue, but we didn't have the actual written document.
Yeah.
Because once the ZBA makes a decision, then ninety days to then write it down and post it.
Yeah, now it says, developers should provide written notice on the slide board. And then later should depart as a man, unable to negotiate the impact, vision of this agreement, but close the business on the ninetieth day following such notes.
Okay.
So once they get the written decision, they go through it and say, okay, here's our problems with it, and then we have ninety days from there to negotiate.
Alright, that works, I just clarify that, um. And, um, the whole, the term is six years plus two if they have an application in process, and that's typical. My understanding is something like this would take five to six years, so that is a typical term.
Yeah, through the permitting process, and a lot of it is the funding cycles. When can they, one of these startups, next funding cycle, but they're available for, so.
Okay. And then my last thing is like correspondence, the notice at the end, I know this is small, but it was like, send the correspondence to the town administrator, and then also copy the town administrator. That seemed a little, but we should maybe copy somebody else, but. Maybe copy the slide board and also the town administrator, but I don't think Jim needs it twice.
What do you want me?
I see it.
Okay, so some.
Take some.
Notice, page seven.
Send notice to the town administrator and also the town administrator.
And also a copy too. Sometimes, sometimes it has to be.
I know you really want attention, Jim, but I think maybe it means you should be select word at that.
Talk to my wife sometimes, I hear you totally.
Alright.
Well, we'll change that with coffee, uh, this one.
Okay, and yes, that was, was what my question was. Anyone else?
I'm fine, yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it may be in all the other documents and all the other agreements that we're gonna have to sign as a town. But I just wanna be sure that this, this particular development will be affordable in perpetuity. And that we define perpetuity as meaning forever and ever and ever, uh, yes, because it has been known to happen. That these types of developments, maybe less than it used to, uh, they would, it would come in as this. And then all of a sudden, whoever was managing the whole things, well, we think we'll turn into condos instead. Or we're gonna raise the rents, I think you're having a problem with Comcast, that Avalon, the rents going up. And what I'm, I'm trying to make a point here is that I would like the issue of affordability in perpetuity. To be in the foundational document, in every document the town has with the grant group, that these are affordable units in part.
This is a hundred years.
But the trade, I think it needs to be stated, this language is.
So it's, yes, the term is eighty-five years from at least.
Eighty-five years, yeah.
And then, uh, C four. Budget be occupied by low, moderate income persons, shall be made affordable for the duration of the grounds. So as long as they're leasing the property, it's.
And I would like it to be in perpetuity, and I mean that honestly, and I'm saying it because if, you know, we're not gonna be here, most of us, maybe some of us.
Don't be here.
Uh, but I would like it to be that. Terms of agreements like that can all of a sudden come applying. And, um, I just wanna be sure that at the end of a hundred years, that whoever is controlling this property can't decide, well, we're just gonna, you know.
We got the end of the lease, they don't know if you knew the lease coming back to us.
Can we just put language in that these will be affordable in perpetuity, please? I like to be plain, simple about things, and I, I don't want, I feel as though we should say it. We should protect the citizens, we're investing town money in it, uh, we're essentially gonna be giving them town property for the dollar. Um, and I just wanna be sure that there's no out. And I don't want editorialized, but it happened to me. In Boston, with a, an apartment complex that was built in the Bat Bay. And all of a sudden, the provincial insurance company decided, even though they had an agreement with City Boston, that these would be rental units forever. They decided to go and convert them to condos, and it was kind of like. It, it, it took a lot of lawsuits for them, provincial, to recognize that, that they weren't filing the agreement that they signed with the, the city. And I just feel like it needs to be spelled out, and if it's add one sentence to this, every agreement that we have. I don't think it's a big deal.
So it's still, I mean. Why?
Trying to wordsmith this, but now might be tough, but the, the, the idea.
It's one sentence you got in.
Right, well, yeah, we're.
Well, where would you suggest we edit, yeah?
I think it's a ton of social.
Cause I, I have no problem with your concept.
Yeah, you have to, you should make a change to that.
Section six. Lease of the project site by developer.
Now, if you go to page four, C four. You can strike for the duration of the ground lease, or we may have for, for perpetuity, we have to check with the grantor group bottom, or whether that can flush or carry that funding, but.
They would find that we have this issue with loss of green.
Yeah, and the, the ZBA can make that version too, so, we'll, we'll send that.
Yeah, I just think everywhere.
We made that change, send it back, we need to.
Yeah, I agree.
But it's just, it, it needs to be said.
I agree.
Plainly, in English.
Alright, so we're comfortable putting it there, take, then we table this for now until it gets back? That we're gonna do.
No, I think they, I don't think they can have this.
Okay, so we could make the motion that we can accept this, provided it comes back with the perpetuity.
As a member.
As a mandate.
And, and no.
And the approval by the management.
Yeah.
Fine.
Yeah.
There you go.
They don't want to pay back.
Uh, question?
No, there's a. So. I have the whole project matter of like questions, so this amendment having to be defined, it's. Uh, good, so, but we know. If this project goes forward, we're gonna have to pay the, to bring the A wing separate. We're gonna have to pay it, probably do something, probably gonna have to pay for whatever the traffic solution is. Pay the, many negotiated proportion. But there's gonna be some significant costs that are gonna be deferred by the town to make this project work for the site. Not just a sustainable project. Is there, what's our offer if we go through this whole process with them and they say, yep, we can do it, it's great, it's completely, blah, blah, blah. And we say, yeah, but we can't afford that piece, is there an offer?
Yeah, I believe there's, there's an out, um, so I gotta take my class, uh, there's a termination at the top, can't terminate.
Yeah, it's, it's on page five, the termination clause, at any time during the term, if circumstances become such, the intended development is deemed impractical or unfeasible.
So that's like, that's our.
A warrant, okay.
I don't define it, so.
The cost for the A wing.
I mean, I thought that was.
Cost of the A wing gym, or cost of, we will have to bear no matter what.
Right, yeah.
Cause we're building there, so we're, we're taking down.
When we tear it down, I mean.
Or doing something else with it, you know, if someone comes back, housing doesn't move forward, someone has a different idea, the A wing, the gym, it's still gonna have to be put on there. Stay on all HVAC systems, so that's a cost that we have.
We're, we're saving hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
I just don't want down the road.
Going over and over, that we're paying out right down, we have, for how many years now, seven or ten years now?
Yeah.
Uh, then for gates empty, heated and short, buttoned up, other than, for how many years, a million dollars, so.
It's not empty, we have a food pantry.
No, I agree with that.
I can't sure, it's empty.
Food pantry does not fail.
But I wanted to make sure.
Their, their lease is set to cover there.
Yeah.
If we make this decision tonight, I wanted to make sure on the record that we were like, okay, we know there's gonna be more money that they've got.
True.
Right, there are multiple offers.
The two notes, they don't have to do, uh, on the A wing and the gym, and if you develop this, you have to something on the track. We don't know yet, it's gonna impact the field, it won't impact the field, but if we put housing there, we'll have to solve the traffic, and we're gonna have to solve the A wing gym.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Answer, yes.
Um, towards the retrofitting of the HVAC for, um, building A and the gym. Breaking that off and making it self-sufficient. There's already five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars previously approved in this, the first five years of SOD's plan for old gates. We've only been doing the minimum because we didn't know what was gonna happen with it, and we didn't wanna save a lot of money into it. So that those funds could be used for whatever that, that, that cost was.
What is this?
Well, I would be fine.
It's a leases, yeah.
It's nice when you're finding some of that.
Buying money.
Yeah, I mean, the money, the money is set aside specifically for that building, so would that be how, I don't know, but at least that is our money.
Cam has already started the process of having some engineering companies come in, looking what's there, how we would make that change over.
So just.
We stopped it, yeah.
Question?
Look good.
I'm good, I do well.
Again, yeah, Suzanne, I'll get you, one second, again, I just wanted, again. Um, again, some disagreement is the work with. Granting group, it's not, again, as we're, as we're talking about, it's, this is not the whole, all the different study. It's not everything else, it's just, hey, can we start working together over the next five to six years, see what can work or not work?
Six to eight.
Right. It'll be six dates.
Six to eight years.
Uh, screen, just for the. For the record, and we got, we got needed.
Hi, can you hear me? Um, Suzanne Green, three three seven First Parish Road, um. Uh, there was just one other item I did, uh, uh, forget to bring up previously. Um, just especially where this is a housing project, and there's gonna be a lot of water demand. This is one of the worst pressure points in town, there's three, this is one of them. Um, so I think there needs to be some sort of accommodation for water pressure in the area if. The demand for housing here, um, causes a reduction in the water pressure in the homes around it.
So you, they're gonna have to do a flow test for their fire system. Prove that they can get sufficient pressure for that, uh, we're also, Suzanne, you probably aware, we're working on replacing and putting in some new water tanks to help with the pressure. I think the new water treatment plant being located close will help with the pressure, but they do have to do pressure studies to ensure it's not flowing with fire suppression system, so that would be something that we look at.
That's good, you're good.
And we have our homes tested as well.
I'm sorry, you're, you're saying.
We have the pressure, water pressure coming into our homes tested as well.
The town would want your house checked.
You can buy, you can get a pressure test for yourself at Home Depot, the little thing that goes right on the.
The last time the water department came in, they told us it was like below minimum standards, the water pressure here.
Again, we're gonna have to address a lot of pressure for that building, so that's an issue, it's gonna be addressed, and if you're doing for that, it's gonna, it's gonna help the entire neighborhood. I think the water treatment plant is gonna have a, a significant impact on some of the water pressure, because it's gonna be so much closer, and do, will be so much more water than it will be right now. But we'll, we'll put that on the list, talk to the water department about.
Yeah, thank you, just because that's something people don't think about, but it will affect people.
Probably have a water tank right there.
When they took the, when they took the tower tank out, it ruined everything.
Yeah, it's. Having all that, I mean, right, for fire safety alone, we have to make sure that all those. Yeah, it's, it's one of the issues we have, we've talked about the actual forty B, about the fields up the area. The real concern was the, the water pressure in the area could support what they need for fire suppression, so it's something that I have to look at. Alright, that's a good, that was a really good point.
And then, um, I just wanted to add too, I know you had, um, cited that there would be public meetings, um, and in the language perhaps on, I don't know what you're looking at specifically, but, um, just to add, can we have, you know, separate butter meetings as well?
Yeah, we, we have some spelled out in this, but I can tell you the, um, the board as a whole knows that we're gonna have to have, um, more than whatever's just spelled out, because this is such, there's so many different, uh, some com- some complexity to that. And part of this, we may need to talk about it later today, um, we're, you know, informational meetings about what's happening. Some other meetings that might be, uh, talking about replacement of fields and, um, so yes, as a general rule, there's going to be, not just informational meetings, but public meetings.
Yeah, and just sort of bonding for the appropriate, you know, offers and mitigation, yeah, that's all.
Suzanne, the agreement calls for at least two public meetings, separate from the permitting process, shall be held in advance of the permitting process. We gather input and rest concerns from citizens, abutters, stakeholders, users of the site. So that's specifically in the agreement. And we've, and we've talked, I mean, at the last meeting, when, when we spoke about this, that we wanna make sure that there's more informational meetings as well, to make sure of butters for her, because we don't, um, make, we wanna make sure that when people hear exactly what's happening, I mean, am I, am I speaking out of turn?
Well, you're right, I think, I think.
Abutters need to be notified by, by the committees that are.
And in the ZDA hearings, conservation hearings, abutters get dealt.
Right, I mean, they get notified.
They, they get lists of the butters for areas projects, and they have to be.
But all meetings will be public, not just.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to address Suzanne's specific question about butters. In, in addition to the public information meetings, abutters often get invited to meetings of planning boards, ZDA, et cetera, as part of the legal process. So, um.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, long story short, we could do the, the legal requirements, it's our intention as a board to go beyond that. We even spelled out in this to have those extra ones, but even beyond that, we wanna make sure there's public information and public, uh, feedback as well.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else, no, anyone, who here, yes?
Hi, uh, Jennifer King, twenty carry, literally, uh, I had seen the proposal from the grant them, and there were like four different categories for housing, and there was something like thirty percent towards income, and then it went up from there, higher levels. So the actual rents actually increased, and it seemed that there was a larger amount of apartments in those higher level rents. Is there anything in this, um, document or proposal contract that states how many units and what percentage of the affordable rate should be? Though, I can't remember right now, but what I saw was at some rates today, were proposed at like two thousand dollars or whatever. And so I'm thinking that maybe we need to sort of, um, specify that we want a lower rate. I was just saying, so like forty B's, they have all those different level rents, and they have twenty-five percent, I believe, is the amount that the town requests. Can we make it so all of those are below thirty percent?
Right, so, I'll, I'll speak a little bit out of school on, on this, here's the amazing thing, the difference between policy work and real life. And the difference between housing that's affordable and affordable housing.
Right.
So we can go on right now and find a place for a grant hearing, et cetera, maybe fifteen hundred dollars, two bedroom, fabulous. And then forty B is twenty, twenty, well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to give you, I'm trying to give you like an example, right? And then like, it could be eighteen hundred dollars, it's smaller, and it's forty B, and guess what? The more expensive one, the state counts as affordable housing worth it, for less expensive one, does not count. It is absolutely asinine, it makes all, most of us bang our heads against the wall because it's ludicrous. Um, because we should be, we should be concerned about housing that's affordable, not just trying to meet some stupid metric. But I'm with you, that the goal will be to make sure that all of these are hidden, those, those metrics.
Does it say anything in this, like, are we requesting to have half of them at that thirty percent?
No, so units will be occupied by income eligible individuals that need to be low and moderate income persons within the meaning provided on the federal section forty-two, low income housing tax bracket program. So then when they do it, it's gonna be, what mix is gonna determine how they make their numbers, and generally.
Well, it's not the numbers, it was in the presentation, it was something.
Generally, if you would like more affordable than the town could be affordable housing trust, probably put in more money towards the cost, so they can drive down those costs. Generally, that's the way it works, um, but that'd be part of the, the forty, the forty B hearing process with the mix.
And, um, can I give, um, a copy of that email to me that you were sending out before the revisions that you just made?
Yeah, the development agreement.
Okay. Yeah, and who was it actually going to, to the grant number, was it?
I don't know if I've followed yet.
So you're sending this down right then?
Yeah, to the.
To the grant, okay.
The grant group and the town council worked on this agreement that we have in front of us.
Right. Okay.
The boards made suggestive revisions, which will go back to the grant and say, hey, we made these revisions, if he's okay, they're okay, we're good, and we'll go forward. Yeah, Sherri, Sherri could just send a copy, we'll, we'll have it before it's back, that's what it'll report.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, look, but Sherri, you have, Jennifer's team, alright.
And also going forward, can we see that, um, that there's, um, a special site on the town website where we can follow all this? So we don't have to put in, have to request for everything.
We have it.
Yeah, we have it.
We have it, we have it.
I know, but like, everything, so this that I just requested should be posted there.
But it wasn't, it was on now, they're discussing it now.
That goes off, goes off the board.
Oh, yeah, it's posted before the meeting, before they discussed it, so it happens, so we can go back to the website and.
Like I was saying, can we forward, can we see that everything does?
Yeah.
But, so we're not going to suddenly, we're not going to the planning, can we just kind of keep track of the project all in one place? This is extremely difficult to keep track of these meetings.
We're, yeah.
We'll, we'll do our best, I know, we'll do our best to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, planning board has their own websites.
Yeah.
Planning board has their own, they get a posting.
Yeah, especially the calendar.
And we'll do our best, we're having to. I'm not charged, we're not charged.
Yeah, and so, I mean, part of this, I mean, and, and there's, I think there's one, someone emailed me about, you know, another, another study that we didn't have up in the part, because it was from ten years ago, and we're about to find it, we'll bang it up, so there, yes, we are, I would say that's, we're gonna do the best that we can to get everything up, because it's, um, in one stop shopping, because frankly, we need that too, because we need to go, like, wait a minute, was that zoning? It can be confusing as well, yeah.
Because you remember the town meeting, that there were seven different proposals, and I don't see seven proposals.
I think, now we've found, what, twelve?
We posted a lot of information.
Yeah, so we'll, yeah, so we're gonna get it all.
Two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, and it's only been.
Well, it's not, I was gonna say now.
No, it is, I mean, those twelve are.
I just saw that, it was with the.
Alright, well.
It, they might, they all, they might have the all proposal thing, but they're stuck with that four studies that have happened.
There are all the different studies that.
Uh, and that was so, yeah.
But I mean, studies, like, one was for the senior center, the other one was for this, I mean, that was, you know, one other ideas were put.
That's all that area. That, that's all that area.
One other ideas were put forward for the use of that, besides the senior center.
But there, there's the whole adaptability review committee is in there, they look at a bunch of different things, that's, that's all there.
Okay.
It's all there.
Okay, I, I.
It is there, I'm looking, the seventh, seventh study.
Riving.
Oh, you got a lot of.
It's something that has to do with one project, though.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's, it's, it, they're, they're not projects, they're studies.
Yeah.
They don't, actually, it's not like an actual, we're gonna put the town hall, it's like, what would happen after the town halling? What would have to happen if we did this, and what would happen after this, that's.
So, question forty there.
Perhaps you could read them, and you would see what they're saying.
Thank you, I haven't read them, thank you. So, one was proposal for the senior center, the other one, what are the other ones proposed? Town hall, they said the town hall didn't want the town office to be there, what were the other ideas for, you know?
Even, I wouldn't, I'd have to go back and read them, um, I wouldn't say the town hall didn't wanna build there, I think the issue right now is the cost. Right, the town had a capital plan that they followed, um, it was the public safety building, middle school.
Library.
Library, the senior center, now the water treatment plant, and now we're at the point where, okay, we're not gonna go back and ask the taxpayers for more money to do that, it's just, it's too much. Right, so the town had a plan going forward, one of the plans was actually the town hall there, and this board was said, yeah, it's, it's just not gonna be enough money. So, uh, at one point, the board talked about, it's not a study, but the board had meetings talking about, um, so along the lines of, uh, during COVID, they had the work studying, workspaces leasing out to people, that's a business you just can't do, so.
There's too much, what I thought, I was, I was truly surprised that this had come up, and, uh, the town wasn't really prepared for it, but.
It's careful what.
I misunderstood that, say it again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I think it was kind of, um, a little surprise that it was proposed for affordable housing in such a short period of time. And then put on town meeting for the vote, and now we're here, like, okay, you know, it literally happened in three months.
I disagree.
I thoroughly disagree with that, having been in various committees and sat here, and it's been discussed and discussed, and in fact, if you, you look back the original, when the decision was made, even before the decision was made, building the middle school, the major of the old gate school was talked about and talked about and talked about.
I'm not that long on that, I was saying.
And who's, you know, who's gonna be what, and, you know, you get to a point where you have to start to call things out. And I think the issue with town hall, as much as that building looks like a town hall, and I guess we all had, you know, buckets and buckets of money. But even then, you know, it's, it's.
I wish that, but some sort of committee or something put together to come up with community input as to what we can do with this building.
There's actually twenty documents in here of the website, going all the way back to what year?
I think it's twenty eleven as the oldest.
Two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
I'm talking about different proposals, even though they're documents, they often go for the senior center, or for London library, or.
But that's the entire area, that's we're all concerned about, is that, everything in that district has to be harmonized.
Right, I'm, I'm just looking for other ideas that we can do to the building, and I just don't.
We've already decided we're going for affordable housing, the vote, if we can do this, if, if we can actually build the building.
I believe the vote was to give the authority to the SL.
Design, that's what we're doing.
Alright, yeah, we're not, we don't, so to re-litigate, all, I mean, we're talking about this agreement to go with the town meeting and the vote stories, and I, I respect your opinion that there could be another ideas, I don't know, again, I haven't heard yet another one. Um, but we are where we are, and town meeting has spoken, said this is where we wanna go, so now we have the agreement, which again, we're talking five, six years to make sure that things work. We're in. I think it followed, we got a grant about a year ago, to study whether or not the old gates could be used for housing. Did that study, the answer was yes, so the second question was, would anybody interested in actually putting housing there? We did an RFP, we got something back, said yes, and the threshold question for the town is, are you interested in putting affordable housing there? Because if the town said no at town meeting, all the stuff we're talking about, wouldn't be doing it. So, yes, we're interested in that idea, now we'll go forward and see if we can come to fruition. Again, a town hall's too expensive, um, I think I saw online, someone, there's a lot of chatter about putting a hockey rink over at the cushion center, cushion school. Maybe we can put the, the hockey rink up at the old gates, um. Yeah, I mean, you're still gonna lose that field, and if you take, senior houses are gonna cause traffic issues.
Hockey rink.
A hockey rink, so. I mean, if, if the housing doesn't go forward for whatever reason, then we'll be talking about what to do at that site, minus that building. Put more fields there, do so maybe a small pavilion, whatever, but, um, at least this board has closed off the town hall option, it's just too expensive to ask the taxpayers, so even more money over what? Because you haven't seen the water treatment plant in the tax position, you haven't seen the, have the cushion stool in the tax position, then they ask for more money, it's just. That makes sense, right, and again, this is, it's still, you know, it may not go forward, it may, as you said, there's an out, we could get there and be like, this is not feasible, like, it may, you know, so we're gonna drive and, and do what we can, that's unfair.
And nothing we do will make everyone happy.
But I think you could be assured that, that we've had experiences already with the Granton Group. In the last affordable housing project we did, which was very successful, so they are the right people, if this ever does go forward, they really, we've, we've got qualified people on the other side of the table, so that's important to add, generally.
Hey, my name's John Hopper, I moved in Central Park, uh, in the fall of twenty one. And since I moved in there, they had traffic, having changed where you do not take a left, out on the first parish anymore. Down toward the first parish, or down near them, because of the speed that, it's non-允许, the school zone. So if you're gonna change more housings on the other side of the street, you have to clear out with the zones, or change the speed limit from the five corners up to the top of, of the cone, where the cans are, do at least eight to fifty miles an hour, say. People sit by there, there's no field vision down, so if you look left, if you wanna take left, you can't see them, and they're sitting up the common forty miles an hour, especially during the month. So I was driving, working, working left, don't know how they're coming in all of the day, and it's really, really, really problematic. So I don't know why they put the left end changed there, the school zone, it's twenty miles an hour zone, leaving the book, fifty units across the street. It's a bad idea, it's just on traffic, they, traffic maintenance, if I were doing the planning, I'd give people all this, I'd move the kids around. I just found out that this guy's taking the town hall for the school, they're supposed to put the housing up cushion, match the housing area with the housing school, wherever it's a map for cushion. If they're bound, build up, put more housing there, it's dead end, it's wider, the people who are in better housing, leave special places. That Central Park, one Central Park ride, or sixty-nine branch, you mean, whatever you wanna call it, it's not appropriate. It's public road, just you know, school, should be closed off, federal house. People drive by in the morning, at four thirty in the morning, sit through, cut through, it's a lot of noise. There are people who are sensitive to the noise, who can hear things beyond our normal spectrum, they pick them up, they'll throw them back, because they don't get to see. So, whatever you want us to focus, there's fifty-three people who live in Central Park, they don't have good HVAC, there's no airflow, there's a cap, the, the hoopula in the old school, there's no airflow up off the second floor, there's no airflow through, there is no east-west parking school on the building, forty-nine. So if you're gonna keep the old building, I would suggest that you have HVAC, airflow all levels of school, middle school, you know, it doesn't happen. So, with the HVAC, lower traffic, it slows, slows people down, before we put in more units across the street in the old town hall apartment.
So, the visionary stuff too, getting that anyway.
You can't see at least the hedge line.
The hedge, yeah, the hedge, that's.
So, getting really into it before you build it, you have to slow down.
But that whole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I was just gonna write.
So we, we can, we have to go up down to Central Park, uh, down the ranch street, down take left, or, or, we can go up, or left in the water from the end of Central Park ride, take left on first parish, down to first parish.
That's, that's.
Good.
It's a tough spot, and, and coming from headwork is, is still tough on the other side, but that's all, no, I'm with you.
It was, yeah, see, you got work, take a left, and down come up, you can't see me, building stone evidence, and come up left. There's no line sight, that one's four and a half, what, five seconds, not, not night, you see the lights, for the road. So, I don't think it'd be feasible for both of us, have a circle there, because it's too tight, a little.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was the study, it was once, five, six, seven years ago, and, and there's been other, there's been other talk about, about. And, and there's been other, there's been other talk about, of work, that's going to have to be one way or even stopping the other side. Yes. I mean, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to say I'm a graphic expert on exactly which way to go. I'm just.
So usually called six or seven, the town hall on Cushing School is making the contest. Town hall is just being half the size of the building, maybe, whatever, the covers, the store sites there, can't park around there. Took the outside away from the building, we closed outside. So you cause a problem on a school basis or a identity basis or a hydropathic basis. So from my perspective, being a lifelong resident of mine, in six years, is to do it. Is opposed to whatever avenue you have in mind, to sit up in Cushing rather than put it in the middle of the confluence of the center of town, especially since the train people have kind of building up the harbor. What, there's a lot more traffic than you're, you're stuck in the school moment, getting up to the first parish and forget. It's a night of traffic, study.
Yeah, that's why we gotta study it and make sure it's gonna work or not work.
So there's, there's your first.
Yeah, no, I don't know. It's a, that's all, and it's all a setup. We have to figure out. So, no, that's, these are the, this is all the stuff we have to kind of litigate. That's what I want. No, I do, I, I do. I appreciate that.
I have some on my head.
Yeah, we'll do the, anyway, okay. Last one, yep.
Um, also, can we see that we, um, back up the lawsuit that's open with the senior center currently for the entrance and stuff that still hasn't been announced?
Let's, we'll go out of the scope and we can address, I don't know.
So we're not getting any more legal things on that.
Um, we'll have to address that after that. I'm not sure where we're getting it on work out. Honestly, I was like, yeah, yeah.
Some of that, that is.
Can we move forward with the motion?
That's what we're not doing. Take motion here.
Motion, move to enter into a development agreement with Granton Group LLC for the use of a portion of Old Gate's intermediate school site for affordable housing.
You don't want that.
That can.
And then, uh, Ms. Harris, she was first, I'm sorry. All in favor?
I.
Alright.
I'm a hostile wisher.
Say that.
Yeah, I would have.
Right. But these are still, these are, again, these are all.
Mostly not single.
Hi, hi. The way the game can go through. Next.
Very good input. Thank you.
Nancy Holt with Historical Properties Monthly Rent Review.
Do you want to go back to show Thursday?
Nope, we don't have any show.
No.
We need.
Oh, that's nice.
Showed it today. It's crossed out.
It's, it'll be on the next meeting, public hearing.
Yeah, the public hearing.
Uh, um, you might want to make a better announcement, because I think senior people are still prepared for that.
I have several of them on there, aren't specific for this.
Oh, yeah, they're on.
Oh, it's because they're more.
One thing, right?
People, I'd let them know if it's happening.
It's lost my.
Lost.
It is on page thirty seven.
Turn to that, you know. Alrights. You'll, what's up? Drancy, yes.
So, um, the documents I provided to you today, um, is in keeping with the discussions we've had over the last year or two about the historical properties and the leases and trying to get things standardized. And this is all part of it coming out of the quarter fine link in and what will happen with the caretakers cottage. So all of the leases that we have are with town council. We've asked them to modernize and standardize. Um, but one of the things that I wanted the board to consider is that the rent schedules have not been adjusted for many years. Even though two of the three properties that are currently have tenants, uh, the town receives funds and it goes into their, uh, a revolving fund, it gets captured to be a revolving fund. And one, it goes to situational historical based on the common lease agreement for, uh, the Bates House that's in, uh, in place, which is a recorded lease. These rents should have been adjusted over the years. Um, so that's what I wanted the board to consider right now, since we don't interact with the tenants for these properties. Situational historical, since they maintain their properties, do. Um, this would be to make a recommendation to situational historical to adjust the rents of properties with town receipts of the funds, which would be Man House and the Lighthouse Keeper's Cottage. And then also to, um, start thinking about where you want to end up with Mordecai Linkin Cottage, which is currently still being rented. Um, so the recommendation that I looked at was maybe perhaps, maybe perhaps was to be a little one there.
Maybe perhaps.
Tying any new lease agreements to the CPI, which is what we have with Go Green. So, um, the Go Green lease agreement is three percent or the CPI, whichever, um, is greater. So I mean, on our residential, I can cap that three percent or CPI, um, not exceed three percent. But right now, if we apply that CPI to the, uh, rents that are in place, you could see where we would have wound up as of twenty twenty five. In order, if you think that is something that the board would like to entertain going forward, I'm going to lease agreements to the CPI on an annual basis. Um, then we could start getting those lease payments up, hopefully in an affordable manner for the current tenants, which would be a ten percent increase over the next three calendar years, which would bring them in line with CPI and then adopt a CPI. Um, and I know at least, um, one of the tenants, based on the call, I know, uh, the GGS here, um, um, situational historical, like I said, they interact with the tenants. Um, we have discussed that, that the, the rents haven't been adjusted in a long time, and they do need to be adjusted. Any such change, my recommendation would be as of January first, um, just to give tenants an opportunity to build them into their budget, and if they decide they no longer want to, um, remain as a tenant, then they have, uh, an opportunity to move on to another space.
I definitely have a question. I like your thinking. I'm gonna start with that. Um, and the CPI, and I like that. I just, that assumes we have the price correctly and get enough.
That's, that's a very good point that you make. And, and these two of these properties, the current tenants also have the caretakers.
Uh, well, so that was my first point. And then my second point is the people that are, the leases, there are different levels of responsibility. So it's almost like that we should have a price. I agree with the CPI, like I set that aside, but then also figure out what the price should be. With the CPI being the how you increment up, you know, in your lease, but then also whatever responsibilities. And then if those responsibilities are over X, that creates a discount, you know what I'm saying? Versus if there's someone that, on an offset, right? Sorry, maybe I'm using the wrong terms. But like, if one of them, there's no responsibilities, and the other one, there is immense responsibilities. We, I, but I like the formula aspect, and I like how you're thinking of that. But I also question, did we have the right price in the first place? So that's kind of where my head's going. Um.
If you look at where the, the red and the black meet in the rental income,
Yeah.
um, you can see where there was a dramatic adjustment.
There was.
Yeah. So that, that was, I think, I think that was quite dramatic. I don't know if it was a change in tenant at the time. I think that would have been, um, very, um, startling to any tenant where they obviously doubled the amount. There's also a difference in size and access.
Okay, well, that I also don't know, because I've been to the places, but I haven't been to where the folks live in the places. Right. That's like a separate area in the man house.
Yeah, I think a lot of it depends, number one, on how much traffic you have around you. Now, I don't mean car traffic, I mean people traffic. So is that, if, if you're at the man farmhouse, you got people wandering around there all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Because the wildflower.
They're wandering down the path with the.
Yeah, so in, in the lighthouse, clearly, I mean, you know, like ants over there, right? Um, on the other hand, people.
Can't beat the view, though.
Yeah.
Can't beat the view.
Can't beat the view.
But, uh, you see, they stand to climb up and put the flag up in the house.
Yeah.
Um, but the Bates House, I assume most people, ninety-nine percent, they just walk by it and they don't even realize. So that particular tenant, um, you know, and, and then there's the condition of the properties. I mean, I haven't been to the man farmhouse property in probably ten years, but I don't, I suspect it hasn't changed much. And they're, they're sort of ancient places, some of these places. I mean, I, I expect that the cottage, the caretaker's cottage at Mordecai Linkin will be better because now it has to meet certain codes and we have to, we're investing the money and.
Well, and that's a standalone too.
Right. So, and it is. So I, I think, and then, like I said, I think it depends on every, one of the properties, at least I think is open at least four times a year
Yeah.
to the public. So there's certain, there's reasons why I think some of these prices at least started out fairly on the low side. And as you're saying, additionally, it depends on the responsibility the person has, um, to, you know, whatever they're doing to make to own a property. So, um, but I, I guess I have a somewhat bigger question. How do we, do we advertise when there's a vacancy? How do people know that they could even them like? That was a big problem.
I, I, I don't know the process. I know, um, the man house tends to spend there since, for over ten years. I'm not sure, um, how long the light has to be, I believe a similar length of time. Um, the Bates House, it's only been inhabited since, um, yeah, have a lot of tenant.
Well, that's because we wouldn't, but.
Um, and all of those, the tenants were, as far as I know, obtained through situational historical society because they were charged with maintenance of the, of the building and interacting with the tenants. Right.
So it was somebody on the historical society.
Well, I would keep on that.
Sure.
Um, so you said that council is revising and updating leases.
Yes, we asked them.
Is that a clue to the lighthouse, which doesn't really have one right now?
Yes, the lighthouse doesn't really have one, and the man house, please, it is from two thousand thirteen.
Okay, so they're gonna all be revised. It will, I would assume, verify exactly the responsibility. Um, because it's a special vacancy, so that'll be spelled out in that. Um.
Yeah, the Gigi from the situational historical provided a document about the, the tenant requirements, what you would be looking for as a tenant to a lighthouse. And there was some more specialization for a tenant that is hoping to be in that space.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah.
Um, so I agree that, uh, you know, so do we know the length of those terms are gonna have to be proposed for the leases?
I would, I would have to defer to town council. It would be an annual lease or a lease until the town or the, um, tenant decide they no longer wish to stay in the property.
Um, okay, so the lease then in theory will incorporate, if we decide to change the rates tonight. Plus, I think the motions should say the rent analysis, the level of rent should be revalued at a time. I think we should say in the motion that once the adjustment that they made, it will be, it will be increased on a CPI, whatever we decide.
CPI.
The greater, uh, the lesser, uh, three percent of CPI. Um, it's still going to be revalued. Because I think that should be incorporated in the price dollar.
I agree.
Yes.
Um, and as for the, the level of where it started, I think that's a very valid point. I do remember uh, one of the negotiations was if the historical society made recognition based on market rent versus responsibilities. So Gigi can speak to that more, but, um, yeah, we've charged them with that, so I feel comfortable with staying with that.
Um, Mr. Cherry, I might just respond to something that his colleague said, um, about upkeep. So the historical society has hired a project manager who has gone out and inspected all the historical properties in addition to the facilities plan that we have, that they have also received. There are funds in the facilities, the first five years of the facility plan for the historic properties, and that person is going to prioritize that property, that project manager, prioritize the repairs that need to be done using this as a funding source. So there are dollars available to address some things immediately. And then, um, there may be other things coming through CPA applications, well, through the cap.
Well, we already did the lease, that's very significant, I'm letting you off now.
I think headwork has been redone, but there are still.
Yeah.
It, 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 there'll always be issues with the historical properties, right? There's a lot that's been going on. We lost, there's two hundred thousand dollars property for the plan. Sorry, Mr. Cherry.
Thank you. I have one addition. And I, um, and I just, I don't know how the board feels about this, but, um, I realize the Citra historical society repays their rental income from Bates House. So it would be their decision whether to increase or not, is what you've written on the thing. I believe we should, i- if that is their decision, we should strongly recommend that we stay in line and have equitable rents for all houses. And that one's not like out of line because one person's deciding one and the rest are deciding the other. Um, and also, we've, um, we've spent a lot of money on that house. Um, so I would want to make sure that they're, they are retaining for that. If, if that's, you know, wouldn't want us to increase, and we're at CPI and they're having increased in ten years. So ten years from now, we've been doing increases and they're still at the same time. So I, I would feel strongly that it's similar and equitable.
I would also expect all the leases to be the same.
I would agree.
With, with the variation, particularly, you know, use your standard lease, they're all standard leases, and then there's an attachment that says, but in the lighthouse, you've got to do this, this, and this. At the Bates House, you're gonna do this, the, so there could be an addendum to a standard lease, but the standard lease has to be standard. They all have to be the same.
True.
Because that's fair. That's just like, and also easier to enforce for everybody to put their head around it.
Uh, questions, comments, concerns?
I think the boss could do.
Thoughts?
She's driving over.
With this initiative.
So are we, do we want to wait for the leases to come through as remodels are, does this have to be done today?
I mean, we're, we're recommending, that's right.
Right. I, I'm just trying to give notice to the tenants that this is something the board wants to go forward with. Um, and then I would use the enforcer to get town council to work on the leases.
So we're coming out for fifteen years.
Right, because this would be, this, the first increase would be January.
January one twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six.
And we're recommending a ten percent.
Right, and then ten percent for next year.
For us, I guess.
And then another ten percent, right? You get to the thirty percent.
Would we comfortable?
Alright.
I'm gonna put that, knowing that we're gonna do all the rest of this in order.
I still want to know if the base is correct.
Well, how do you know?
Do you mean for what their rate is?
I don't know.
That, that's definitely their, because I have copied the base.
You think that, that rates are correct? Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know for certain if that's correct. They, I have copied the lease that they provided to me.
Alright.
Situational historical has been very, very helpful in working all this together.
So with all this information, what would we recommend for the Mordecai Linkin cottage rent?
How many differences is it?
One.
One.
One, so.
But with, I mean, a long view.
But I, I think it'd be along the same lines as Bates House.
Bates, okay.
It's a one bedroom, and depending on what, what you're going to ask that person to do.
Yeah. And then that would still follow the ten percent, ten percent, even though we haven't, even if we didn't have a tenant until the following year, or whatever it would be, it's still all the ten percent.
I mean, you could social matches.
Right, right.
Pay into CPI immediately.
Right.
And then do a disagreement if you wanted to, and just getting these other two properties.
Up to where this should be.
And Bates is currently eleven hundred.
Yes.
And then with the half percent.
The more, the more that I like in, in theory, you start at thirty.
Correct, yeah.
I think so.
Right, with the.
Thirty hundred, and it doesn't, just, again, our first camera doesn't count for our.
Does not.
Does not. It's thirty hundred else.
No, no, it does not.
It's not de-禁止.
It's not de-禁止.
Not de-禁止, right.
It's just.
Could we de-禁止?
Well, I would say no, it's similar.
I'm just.
The old probably could. One of the old probably de-禁止.
I'm ready. Few more. Obviously, you need us to add to the, the.
Uh, can we, if we use CPC funds to go last?
Um.
I feel like there was a reason why I couldn't do it.
Well, you see PC funds to go last. We saw this slide.
We will investigate.
Yeah, we use the, yeah, we'll look into it.
Alright. Everyone's good.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll take a motion to
Move to direct situational historical's deciding to increase the monthly rental rates on the man house to the light keeper's cottage by ten percent as of January one, twenty twenty six. on the man house to the light keepers cottage by ten percent as of January one twenty twenty six, and then by ten percent for the next two calendar years effective January first. The level of rent, the level of rent can they be reevaluated, can then be reevaluated at that time?
Sorry.
Stretch that.
Right, I think they wanna, I think the rest of the members want to move the C P I language, right.
Yeah, and we also wanted to include strongly recommending the Bates house be similar.
Okay, I'll let you guys do it.
Yeah. Cherry, you're the master at this.
Do you want me to take care of this?
I, I can do it.
Yeah, you cover it.
Move the direct Sister Historical society to increase the monthly rental rates on the man house and light housekeepers cottages at ten percent as of January first twenty twenty six, and then by ten percent for the next two calendar years effective on January first. Further, move to increase rent after by three percent or C P I, whichever is less, right, three percent or something, or plus. And further to, um. To recommend, to strongly recommend that the Bates house, um.
Follow the same formula.
Follow the same formula as other properties. Listen.
Good team ever. So yeah.
Alright.
Move by yourself.
Move by yourself, second, but.
Me.
By, um, listening, Miss Harrison. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
I will advise town council and connect with G T and Mary.
Mark it cam. Alright.
Mark it cam. Classification.
So, in keeping with the fiscal twenty seven budget calendar and cutting the, I mean, um, in order to have a nice seamless fiscal twenty seven budget period, I'm asking the board to, um, vote on the fiscal twenty seven classification plan because that basically represents the non-union folks who are in the Ant Union, the Ant Union, and on in the Tosca Union, which both have settled contracts for fiscal twenty seven. What's being proposed is exactly, is in keeping with what Ant is receiving and what Tosca members are receiving. Um, just for cost, just for pay, not for any of the benefits.
I believe in equity, and I have this question every single year because it's a rounding error and a lot of them says to the micro percent. The rec office staff is getting two point four percent if they're at step four. And everybody else is step five, so I think it's a rounding error.
Okay. So if you, if you wanna vote it.
So if you can monitor it, it could be point five percent.
Yes, absolutely can do that.
And the golf crew members.
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, the golf crew members too. Oh, but then that's two point six the following year. I guess, how does that work? I swear, last year we had this issue and it was a rounding error.
Oh, but you can, if the board so sees fit, you can direct me to make sure that, um, the, it's two point five zero between all steps and we'll make whatever penny adjustments we need to make.
Yeah, that's, I just echo that. Everyone should be getting the exact same increase and I think it's rounding errors because.
It's a round formula, but, you know, I just always knock his friends out of the house.
I know, but like, sometimes the, I don't want the perception that the golf crew members are getting less by, I don't think that.
Absolutely need that adjustment, and I think only on the hourly basis, it looks fine on the salary goals.
We do this, um.
We do it whenever we need to, I think, that's probably a good question.
It depends on if the other contracts are, um, settled. So we wouldn't vote it if you didn't have, um, contracts with Ant and Tosca.
Okay. This, uh, this is effective, uh, the lighthouse.
Twenty point six, forty points.
Yeah, exactly.
Because believe it or not, we'll start doing the personnel schedules in a couple months for fiscal twenty seven.
Look, you love me because I find it happy.
I do.
Alright.
One of the many reasons.
Alright, that's my only question.
Yep.
Yeah.
She took care of it. Motion.
Move to adopt the F Y twenty seven classification plan for non-union employees, which reflects a three percent cost of living adjustment, which is consistent with the F Y twenty seven cost of living adjustment negotiated with the Ant, the bargaining unit. The hourly employees reflect the three percent cost of living adjustment and the one point five percent schedule increase negotiated with Tosca bargaining unit. The F Y twenty seven schedule would be effective from July first twenty twenty six through June thirtieth twenty twenty seven.
Miss Conley second, Mr. Gilmore, all in favor? Oh, oh, oh.
No, just question, do you wanna make a finer motion and further that the schedule be corrected or to make sure that it's two point five percent on all the hourly, or do you just wanna do that?
Just do it.
We'll just do it.
Just do it, yeah, it's, it equals out.
We got it.
Equity.
You have a sense of fairness, do you?
All in favor? Aye, aye, unanimous. Two thousand dollars. That's one hot.
And, and all intended, motor law. So annually, we receive a piece of the ride share on, for charge, the discharge on every.
Thank you to all our Uber drivers and Lyft drivers.
Yeah. We get ten percent, uh, ten cent, almost nine percent. So this year, uh, we was, have received two thousand one hundred ninety nine dollars and thirty cents. We have to use it for some type of transportation service, so we use it for our roadway improvements. So I'm asking the board to take a vote to allow us to use two thousand one hundred ninety nine dollars and thirty cents for that purpose. And over the course of the theory that this has been in place since fiscal eighteen, we've received eight thousand four hundred eighty seven dollars and thirty cents. That's.
We'll say. Questions, concerns, we should go to Rose.
Right, just, since, move to allocate, well, somebody else has a question.
No.
No. Move to allocate the two thousand one hundred ninety nine dollars and thirty cents to the transportation network company funds, the roadway improvements, on receipt.
Mr. Gilmore second, uh, and, and Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous and yes, drive safe.
Thank you. No one can't.
Get a ride share.
It's terrible, some of those pop holes, some of those pop holes.
Be careful with ride share. Come home safe, we look at that money everywhere. Uh, alright, new business, now this is, uh.
We can't, we have.
Uh, we're gonna go to them all. But there's no jump balls on these, so these are folks that we're reappointing and we put out. Some of them are joining the board, they either, we didn't get anyone else, or there's still room on the board and other people, so it doesn't, there's no jump balls, uh, for folks. We went through, I think we removed like somebody, because it might be a jump ball, there's other people, but these are the, um, people who wanna be reappointed.
People requested to be reappointed, some people did not request.
Jump, correct. That there are two people lying in the same position.
For one spot, right, or.
That we're not doing that, and we're not getting any new interviews.
Right, this is.
These are just reappointments.
Reappointments, and there's, and most of them, there's even room for more people to join.
Yep. We, we found a way to make this really terrible process, but this is a better way to. It's been torturous in years.
Yes.
Uh, I just must say, the, that's, the, the chair forms, awesome.
Yeah.
It really is great to have that input and, you know, have a form of like, it's all the same, you can see. These are the people that are retiring, here's the people that wanna stay on, Jamie Gilmore's going.
How many meetings have they missed?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's good, no, because it's a ten hour.
They do their efforts, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's wonderful, good job.
So everything.
Should we?
So I'm glad you like that, because we decided not to give you all, like, the applications, the applications won't let you give any information. If it's, when it's new, you have interviews, we'll give you the application and then resume the people who are.
Really. Can I actually, so I have a comment on these, um, and it's related specifically to the North, uh, River Commission. Uh, and I've had a couple calls recently on it, um, our state rep actually put in legislation to get rid of the commission, so there's, you know, there's been a bunch of calls. And what I realized in all of this, and I mean, to the like, issues or whatever, what I did realize is that of all the committees that we appoint, that is one committee, we do not have any sort of select board liaison. So there's no, so I do not think we should be appointing people to boards with no one person, there should be a contact person for those people, so I am proposing that we, I don't know if we can, if we're allowed to do this now, but, um, I do think we should have a select board liaison to that committee.
We will be, are you voting, Jerry, is it ready?
We just raise our hands so we can.
I'm just saying, I think it's a, I think it's a compromise.
You know, when you.
Yeah.
We can add this list when you, uh, yeah.
Do you want it in gym?
Yes.
In gym.
But until then, it's gonna be these candidates. So.
So are you suggesting we, you know.
I can do it if you don't mind. But I'm just, I do think there may, there's a gap.
No, she's keeping, she wants what she has.
Yeah, and especially.
But if you're not suggesting we double vote on this.
Wait, no, 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 please, I mean.
Oh, I'm not suggesting that to vote, I'm saying, I just realized in talking to people, like, if, if someone has something with the waterways, they don't look up, if someone has something with, you know.
I, I don't disagree with you, but I thought you wanted a whole, I don't know.
I don't, I don't.
No, can we move, make you?
Okay, you can move, you read the whole thing too, right.
Mr. Gilbert, uh, move another motion, please.
I'll bet I read it.
Please do, we all.
Suggested motion, one, move to reappoint James Omduff to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term of two years until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Carol Sullivan Hanley to the Animal Control Board for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Jean-Laurie Voger to the Beautification Commission for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint William Hegrich to the Coastal Advisory Commission for a term of one year or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint, reappoint Daniel Fogarty, Megan Stover, and Athena C. Brodsky to the Commission on Disabilities for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Margaret Stillman to the Community Preservation Commission for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Penny Scott Pice to the Conservation Commission for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Susan D. Kelly, Susan M. Pope to the Council on Aging for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Susan Day leader to the Economic Development Commission for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Michelle Segaze and Patrice May to the Sister Harbor Cultural District Committee for a term of two years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Alexander Payne, Elise Boiu, and James Nishon to the Mordecai Lincoln Property Committee for a term of two years until, or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Adrienne Gallagher and John Lallone to the North River Commission for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Daniel Fogarty to the Sister Cultural Council for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint James L. Canavent, Raymond F. Booker, and Carol Sullivan Hanley to the Sister City Ireland Cork County for a term of two years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint William Schmidt, Dorothy Cook, Sean McCarthy, and Lieutenant David Hermans, Hermans, to the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee for a term of one year or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Joseph Kelly and Edward P. Kelly, Jr. to the Veteran Services Advisory Council for a term of three years or until his successor is named. Further, move to reappoint Brian Kelly, Richard W. Murray, Brian Cronin, and David Dennehy to the Waterways Commission for a term of three years or until his successor is named. And then further, move to reappoint Joan Wyckoff and Bruce Harbides to the Water Resources Commission for a term of three years or until his successor is named.
Mr. Gilmore, second.
Second.
By, uh, Ms. Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to all.
Nice job.
Very well done.
Very well done.
Alright, discuss, oh, this is, we're gonna make this quick. Sidewalk, so, Sutupi is over at E B C, there was the working group on sidewalks. Basically, this is for future meeting, I just wanna take the temperature for, for the sidewalk committee and cushion reuse. Basically, like, for E B C, just to update, not have a whole committee for them to update the list that we've had, this fifteen year old list of sidewalks to complete and update and say, hey, here it was done, you know, already, E B C's already looked at this. And also, because North Sister is coming on board, to say, what are your recommendations, talk to business folks? Just to have them, it's like a, one, it's like a report, not a whole, have a committee, be here forever. Give us the report of what you're thinking for North Sister, and also give us an update. Do you like that idea, or is this not a good idea?
It's very good.
You like it very good.
Yeah.
Like it? Okay, we're not for it. Next one, cushion reuse. Do you want to have a committee for reuse?
There have been, there have been individual members of the town that have stepped forward to say that they would be interested in supporting that.
Yeah.
I think anytime you can have these subcommittee that has an extra set of eyes on everything, coming from different walks in the town, like Dr. Price, for example, I think that's, that's helpful. It's not gonna make anything worse. And it allows people to get involved in the organic business.
I think it worked well with more of that.
There you go. Put it down.
Okay, so, we'll put something together, okay, if you wanna get the temperature anyway.
Jim loves that.
But no, it's a good way that everyone has a central place to talk about it.
And be clear, it's loved property, we are not reusing that building. There are no redesigning, that building is coming down.
Paid for, it's already paid.
Buildings.
Yes. Paid, voted, paid. Voted and paid more, so we're discussing the reuse of the property, it's not like site. So I think it, I would make it clear that it's the site, not the building. Every once in a while, I hear people making, saying like, hey, we could put something in there.
No, no, no.
We decided to save it now.
It'd be cheaper to tear it anyway, so.
Oh, right.
Lunatic, lunatic.
Yeah, yeah. Lunatic. But I think, I do think it's a great idea. A lot of ideas out there.
Alright, next, excellence. Not to prejudice, prejudice anyone, but if you don't pass this, next one, kids will be very excited. Let's talk about the known ice cream.
A nice, yeah.
Where's, where's my, my, my reason?
Where is, I know, these are my run reasons, what happened? Best, alright, known as ice cream.
Move to renew the Hocke Tesla license for Billy Hobie.
No discussion.
It's one of the twenty twenty five season, and they all require approval, we all love ice cream.
Yes, for ice cream.
And, uh, it, it's about the Hock, so, this is for a future meeting, but as you may recall, when, um, when, uh, Police Department came in, they wanted to do the fingerprinting, we carved out, um, no, we carved out food trucks. But we left in, we left in ice cream trucks.
The printing.
The fingerprint, for the fingerprint, so it's additional cost to them. And I would, it was brought to my attention, and I, I would like to verify, if we didn't counsel it, is the, um, vendors, if they have to get four, they, they go credit. So it's a redundant check, and that's in the database. So I would like clarity from, I, I know we're missing something, I'm not sure that's true information, but I think we should review it at some point, you guys should review it at some point, is, is it redundant to have our Police Department saying, back my check?
Well, remember, we're like five people, we're five companies that we're.
Right, and, and we, it was a very small group to begin with.
Now, we can, that's the obvious.
People were trying, you know, I, I don't know why they, you know. But, but, I mean, we, we thought it made sense because they're in, on deck with small children, they gotta get four, they gotta do all this stuff. But, um, we should be equitable with our small businesses and, and, and it's, it's unnecessary.
Well, in which case, I, I would suggest that we look at who was left subject to that, whatever it was, a bylaw requirement, whatever.
It's that based down to a precious few, which makes it look like squat zoning is slowly years away. Anyway, but I second the most.
Thanks, I have them in the stand field, all in favor?
Aye.
I have all of them in the stand, perfect.
I'm just looking for bubbles to have any.
Still like.
Lunatic. I love it always.
No, we'll, we'll, we'll take that, it's, it is a good point.
Always has been.
Alright, liaison reports and correspondence. We'll go, we'll go left to right, this one, yes, in my office.
Okay, well, if, I don't know if this is personal or not, for a liaison report, but, uh, John L. Sullivan, mother of past, her wake is, uh, this Wednesday night. I'll give you the information, I said I would do.
That's all the new charities, one?
Yes.
Yeah, and, um, it's our higher sisters.
Yeah, it's our sister city, one of our very active sister city. And I said, can I find it? Hold on, I guess I can right there, can you? Hold on, I can't get my game together. Uh, who, who's, uh, Sullivan, Richardson Gaffey, Teresa Sullivan, Richardson Gaffey, Wednesday night, May fourteenth. The seven, from four o'clock to seven PM, the funeral matters, Thursday eleven AM at the St. Mary's. And the parade will be Friday, so. Just so you know, that's really all, really it. Oh, well, hold on, we got twenty one kids split to, uh, Skiberry. For the exchange.
All right.
Yes, sorry.
Um, well, our wake is, is tonight, um. And I don't use, can't think of much else that I have. Everything else we talked about here, well, the house, so. House quiet.
Uh, this very, the library is hosting a town on canvas art campaign, which is a tiny art thing. It starts on June second, you get a little fun, um, and you go, you go to the library and pick up these little tiny canvases and there'll be different age categories and prizes and, um, it's being judged by the Arts Association and the, the, you can get more information at the library and the final, the winners will be displayed in there each day, so that's exciting. And the Council on Aging has done this really cool thing and I didn't write down the date, I wrote down the time. You can go online at Council on Aging, doing games, game night for seniors and high school students. It's an intergenerative, um, it's a five thirty on some date that I forgot to write down and, um.
Coming soon.
Coming soon, there's feet, the ping pong court, formal, so check that, it's kind of cool.
The other first five minutes.
Oh, I should just have one thing published, they're on our agenda next time for license renewals, we posted a public hearing, and so it's that, it's been two years already. Um, so they're up for renewal and the next term is for five years.
I was gonna say, did we, we.
Um, we, right, the first term was two years and then this is five years and then the shellfish advisory, they will be made in next week. For a brief discussion on some of the regulations, there are shellfish possible, is recommended changing, modify some of the regulations. But we may have that on the agenda next week, next time to submit to us.
At quarter five, it's done.
Listen.
Uh, first, March eighth, twenty twenty five, from George W. Bush, greetings to those gathered at the John F. Kennedy Presidential Museum Library to support the John P. Condon Memorial Fund. John's services, United States Navy SEALs, helped preserve the security of our homeland and defend the liberties of America, hold beer. Our nation will not forget John's selfless sacrifice, will forever honor his memory. I pray that John's family and friends take comfort in the knowledge that they, that he helped make our country and our world a more peaceful place for future generations. Laura and I send our best wishes, may God bless you, may God bless our boots of veterans, and may he continue to bless America's time with George Bush. Uh, this is to Sherry Moak Young and the board. According to Sherry, I would like to thank the members of the Select Board for granting the permits for our Allison House event, honoring metal health awareness. It was indeed a breath of fresh air, literally, to walk into that room for the meeting. Granted, I had just been at Marshfield Town meeting the night before. So to feel welcome and to witness a board whose members were congenial, friendly, respectful, interested and responsive was impressive. That certainly a collective of the meeting's spirit, including in so many ways, it's that you have Allison House is proud to be part of this beautiful committee, thank you. Uh, here is the link for our event, Jen Gibson, Allison House.
We love that.
Love that.
Love that, so we need a copy of that.
So we need a copy, we were good in comparison.
Uh, from the Cedar Point Association, Situate Select Board, here's Select Board members, quite a few years ago, a former member of your board suggested we provide the town from time to time with a list of our contributions and donations we have made to the town, other chair and other chairboard donations, or organizations. I am pleased to provide you with a list of our contributions and donations over the past year, it's real brief, but I can read it. From May, from May until the start of this May, Cedar Point Association spent over a thousand dollars maintaining the plantings and landscapes at the Lighthouse and Art Park. Donation three hundred was made to Situate Heart Fire Drive, and one ninety was spent on an upgrade to our car sticker program to help the Situate Police Department identify vehicles that had a legitimate reason to come on to Cedar Point the day of the Lighthouse Relaying Ceremony. We donated over a thousand dollars to several local charitable organizations, including the Situate and Trust Co. Associates, Situate Community Christmas, and Situate Food pantry, and some regional and national charitable organization in memory of designers who have passed away. Lastly, volunteers spent countless hours throughout the summer doing maintenance work on flower beds and watering because our neighborhood is visited by thousands of visitors. We feel very strong, it's important to have everything look good throughout the year. Sincerely, David Ball, President of the Cedar Ball, Cedar Point Association.
Very nice.
Lastly, there is a, uh, a notice of, of project, the Butter's Municipal Office of Regulatory Industries from GZA File. Uh, dear interest, this is a chapter ninety one license application to the Situate Harbor Park Project at forty four Jericho Road. On behalf of the town Situate, GC, applicant, GCA Department, metal, metal has submitted a chapter ninety one waterways application to construct and maintain a town park, including a dock, boardwalk, and revenge at forty four Jericho Road. Pursuant to the waterway regulations, please find the enclosed written notice of the application, informing regarding how to submit a public document and a copy of the project drawings for your information, please submit public comments and, and directed in the opposed material. Don't I have?
May I interject on that?
Sure.
Pier forty four, um, someone asked me recently, are you ever gonna do anything down there? All I can say is, other than the water treatment plant, I would say there's probably no project in town that is subject to so many permitting requirements and hearing.
Yeah.
And it's, it's been just, it, it's a highly regulated area because of the location. Um, it's, it's coming along, but.
Over water.
Permitting takes time.
Yeah, we're building out over water.
Poison ivy.
Or next to it, or in private, or next, uh, yes, it's.
Poison ivy, right. There was only a market for poison ivy.
Yeah, well, boom.
So we have, uh, a motion to adjourn and sign that. Uh, not to adjourn, that's a sundown, we adjourn.
Okay, you have a motion.
Sorry, I need a minute, I'm sorry.
You approve.
Minutes.
For the minutes.
To approve, which one are they?
April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, and to move to approve, but not release the.
Right. Exact session for April eighth, twenty twenty five.
Oh, no, I think twenty nine. Let me do it exactly.
April twenty nine, you're right, twenty twenty five.
Right.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Harrison, second, aye? Miss Cal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I have to read this.
I have to read this.
Why?
I don't understand.
The Chair, Chair of the Select Board moved into executive session pursuant to purpose three, the open meeting law to discuss strategy and structural litigation. And I declare that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the Select Board in connection to this matter, uh, matter, shellfish agriculture. Number two, discuss strategy sessions and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiation with non-union personnel, contracts with town administrator, finance director, town accountant. All right, further, move that the Select Board go into executive session pursuant to purpose three, the open meeting law to discuss strategy and structural litigation of shellfish agriculture and that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the Select Board in connection to this matter. The board will not reconvene in open session, requires a roll call vote.
Yeah, Ms. Kibbich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Tomlin?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, move this Select Board go into executive session pursuant to purpose two of the open meeting law to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the board will not reconvene in open session.
Ms. Kibbich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?